Tony, you guys ready? Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council. July 16th, we're starting at 7:02. But everybody rise tonight's invocation will be led by Kelly Dupree from the West Covina Faith Community Church. And our pleasure agents will be led by Councilwoman Jessica Shoemaker. Please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you so much for the privilege of living and working in the great city of West Covina. And Lord, we just ask your blessing now upon our city council. And upon this meeting tonight, Lord, that you would give them wisdom. Lord, that you would help them make the decisions that are going to truly improve our community and be a blessing to each one of us. And we thank you, God, that you're going to be with them and guide them tonight. Lord, we also remember all of our citizens and everyone who's serving our country overseas in the military. And Lord, we thank you for those who are serving right here who are putting on uniforms in the police and fire departments. Father, that you would watch over them, be with them, use them, bless them, keep them safe, Lord, and give them success in their mission. So God, tonight, we commit this evening to you and we thank you, Lord, for what you're going to do here in this room. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please start reading the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Mr. City Attorney, is anything you can report out of closed session?
Mr. Mayor, with respect to item number one.
Turn your mic on, please.
Mr. Mayor, with respect to item number one on city attorney appointment, council voted five to zero to direct city manager to bring back a one-year contract naming me, Tom Duarte, as city attorney, and also directing the city manager to withdraw the RFP for city attorney services. The balance of your closed session items will be heard after your meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to go a little bit out of order. I have a couple combinations I'd like to hand out. And we have some very special people in our audience tonight. And it's an honor to introduce them. Good evening. Tonight, we'll talk about the rest of Vina's legislative, very, very important people that I had some honor to speak to about tonight. First of all, I want to start out with Senator Susan Rubio. Assemblymember Blanca Rubio. Assemblymember Philip Chen. I know we have some representatives here for, do we have one for Ling Ling Chen? Is she here? I think that's not. I thought they were supposed to be here, but they're not. So we're going to start out with, for special, the reason why we're here talking about these very special people is for the special funds that they were included in the state budget. Because of their great work, West Covina will receive $300,000 for public safety enhancements. We plan on to purchase a much-needed new ambulance and generator which will serve the police station and the dispatcher center very, very much. So now, first of all, I'd like to call up Senator Susan Rubio. I know we have something here, let me find it for you. You know, not very often do we get to give our senators and our assemblymen a certificate. It's always the opposite way around. They always come to us and they're telling us, "Thank you." But this is our way of saying, "Thank you so very much to you." And what it is, is with the greatest appreciation for your support in public safety enhancements for the city of West Covina, this is for Susan. Senator Susan Rubio for the 22nd district.
Lloyd. Should have the chiefs come up.
The fire chief.
Have the chiefs come up. We figured since it's for public safety, you might want to have them up here.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. I'm always honored to be here in West Covina. I've had a long relationship with the city and I really value our leaders here. Thank you for what you do. And of course, my colleagues, Assemblymember Blanca Rubio, mister, I call everyone mister. I used to be a teacher, so I can't get rid of the habit, so I say mister. But thank you so much for being here. Public safety has always been my top priority. And when I was campaigning, it's one of the things that our residents really were concerned about, rising crime. And I said, "As soon as I can, I will make sure we have some funding." And so I'm honored to have fought for that funding along with my colleagues. They were instrumental as well because we all have to collaborate. So thank you and I hope that it's useful. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Of course, ladies first. Sorry. Please come forward. This right here is for Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio of the 48th district. And like I say, with great appreciation for your support in public safety. And like I say, it's an honor to do this because we never get this chance to thank you as much as we should be thanking you. And we know how hard you guys work for cities and sometimes you don't hear the thank you. All you hear is the bad stuff, the people when they're not happy with what you do, that's all you hear. You never get the opportunity to have them say, "Thank you." And for the city of West Covina, we definitely want to say, "Thank you."
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, it's an honor to be here with you along with my colleague, Senator Susan Rubio and Assemblymember Philip Chen. It is a group effort and it's really, thank you for this certificate. But to be honest with you, it's an honor for me to be able to do this. Just to be able to bring resources to the Sangre Valley for me is an honor and really what we're there for. So I appreciate the certificate, but just so you know that with or without a certificate, our minds are always in how we can improve the communities, especially with our public safety folks here. I want to thank you. They came to visit us and the first thing they said is, "We need help." And so, of course, being both teachers, we engage immediately and try to help as much as we can. And we're very excited that you were able to receive the $300,000. So thank you again.
Thank you. And now, this room here is, you know, third but not last. You know, you're just as important to us, but the ladies always has to come first. And I'm sorry, but the senator always has to come first. And this is for City of West Covina Certificate of Recognition for Assemblyman Philip Chen for the 55th district with the greatest appreciation for your support in public safety enhancement. Thank you. Let's get a picture of him.
I think you guys can hear me. It's a pleasure for me to be in West Covina, one of my favorite cities. And let me first say this. These two amazing legislative officials, the public servants, did all the heavy lifting. I'm here to subdue them. These are folks in which, when I go to Sacramento, I follow their lead. So I'm here to just supporting them and supporting the city of West Covina. When I first signed up in 2015 for the State Assembly, you said, "Bill, watch out for the freshman fifteen." Well, here, West Covina represents 30% of the circuit, of the 70% for a summer walk through meal. I'm afraid of the 4015. I'm not afraid of the freshman fifteen. And then so much time was given, it is usual that I analyze the freshman fifteen. But you guys have the number one fire chief, the number one fire service, an amazing city council group that here is all supporting the needs of the city here in Sacramento. So they come up to Sacramento, advocate for the needs, time to time again. So with this, by fact, though, with the amazing municipal services, with amazing legislative officials, it's an honor to represent you. So with that said, without further ado, I hope you have a great night. It's an honor to represent you here in West Covina and I wish you the best. Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
You're very welcome. Thank you. If you were sick around, I'd like to have the senator, please, and have the council come down. I'd like to have a picture with them. Okay, I'd like to move forward. At this time, I would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the rest of Vina outstanding older American. If Mr. Kenneth Lund here, will you please come down? That's him. Sorry, sir. Ken is a stellar example of volunteerism, demonstrating going well beyond service above himself. Over the past 10 years, Ken has demonstrated his philosophy as evidenced by the action, commitment of his time, sharing of his knowledge and making donations. His volunteerism is amplified by being a member of the Board of Directors of the Eminent? Did I say it correctly? Eminent Health Foundation, who provides funds and support for the eminent hospitals and the persons in need. Serving on the West Covina Historical Society Archive Board, providing historic information and preservation. And most notable, he serves on the Board of Directors with the Rotary Club of West Covina. During the past 12 months, Ken has been the leader and supporter and a significant donor of a long list of activities, supporting the youth of our community and undeserved internationally, donating hundreds of hours of time as well as donations and being above and beyond. At this time, I'd like for you to say something and then I have one of our senators who'd like to present a certificate to you.
Thank you, Mayor Lloyd. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I really appreciate this honor. I know you like to wear an Army hat, so I'm. Oh, Marine Corps? Well, I don't care which branch it is. I brought my Army cap, but I chickened out of the U.S. I would like to just say just a few things. I would like to recognize the wonderful support that I've gotten from Rudy, my wife of 59 years. I would like to thank the wonderful fellow members of the Rotary Club of West Covina. We have all worked together. I've been in the club myself 30 years and they've just been a marvelous bunch of people to work with in supporting our community. I would also like to say that I am the proud son of immigrant parents who came to the USA from the small country of Denmark in Europe. They loved it here, they prospered here, and I feel exactly the same way about my own experience. Now let's turn for a moment to West Covina. We've been here since 1974. This has really been a marvelous, friendly, great city in which to live. It's just been a pleasure. And we've had a lot of great friends over the years here. And it's been just a terrific opportunity to work with the other volunteers in the community. And I truly appreciate the recognition and the honor of receiving this award or certificate this evening. It's been such a pleasure and I thank you again.
Thank you. We have a couple certificates for you, but before we do, I would like to bring the senator up. She'd like to present hers first.
Good evening again. Well, first of all, thank you for your service. Thank you. I currently have my little brothers serving in the Army overseas as well. So thank you, thank you for the family too, for allowing you to have served and really honor us with your service. So today I'm here to honor you because we know that you have really been instrumental in participating in many of the service clubs and really putting a lot of community hours. And I find myself constantly trying to encourage our youth to participate. I've been a member of the Women's Club for 15 years myself. And believe me, it is difficult to get people to participate and we see that generational gap. And so I hope that our youth sees the value in what we do in terms of, you know, I'm sorry, you do. In terms of, you know, fundraising, constantly trying to offer scholarships and trying to help the servicemen overseas. So there's a lot of things that I think our community doesn't know as it pertains to service clubs. And they're slowly, I don't want to say dying now, but again, I want to encourage people to participate as much as you can because they're the ones that really keep our communities going, safe, involved. And it's really truly an honor to be here presenting you with this certificate. On behalf of the California State Senate, it is my pleasure, my privilege to present you with this certificate of recognition. I applaud your exceptional achievement and invaluable contributions to our community. You're the embodiment of the Rotary model, right, service above self. So please, let's give him a big, big round of applause. Thank you. Thank you so much.
They could hear me. An honor of being recognized by the West Covina City Council as the 2019 Outstanding Older American Volunteer of the Year. Your commitment to our community is highly commendable and I wish you the best in life and the future endeavors. And it's signed by Senator Ling Ling Chen. And now, least but not, last but not least. From the city of West Covina, the city council is pleased to give Kenneth Lund, Ph.D., Outstanding Older American Volunteer of the Year Award, July 2, 2019. This is for you too. Please get a picture.
Congratulations, one more time. Thank you so very, very much. You serve it 100%.
Assemblyman left a little bit too early, but he did have a couple more certificates he was going to give. I guess he forgot. First of all, we have one for city manager, David Carney, please come down. From the Assemblyman, Philip Chen. Please come forward. Okay, surprise, surprise, surprise. Okay, there's a California Legislative Assembly Certificate of Recognition presented to David Carney, city manager, in recognition of your leadership and service. Thank you for your dedicated commitment and contributions to the city of the residents of West Covina. You know what? Last but not least, I'm sorry, guys, this can wait. I have four more I have to give out. Starting out with the Honorable Mayor Protem Tony Wu. Please come down. I wasn't supposed to do this. The Assemblyman, Philip Chen, was supposed to be doing this, but he left and left the certificates up here, so I have to. Honorable Tony Wu, Mayor Protem. We don't have to read it. Okay, let's get a picture with him. Okay, next. Councilwoman Lady Lopez. They have the money. This is an assemblyman. It's the same thing, okay? I can read it, but it's from Assemblyman. Let's take a picture. You gotta wait. Sorry. Councilmember Jessica Shoemaker. It's the same thing. I don't know who can be next. Watch. Watch this. Councilmember Dara Castellnells, please come forward. Watch how I do this. And this is from Assemblyman Philip Chen. You're very welcome. All right. Our next one is for our fire chief, Mark Hamble, please come down. I'm going to read this a little bit different. Mark Hamble, Fire Chief, an honor of your leadership and service. Thank you for your dedicated commitment and great contribution to the city and the residents of West Covina. And it's signed by Assemblyman Philip Chen. All right, now the last but not least. Are we ready? Mr. Protem, Tony Wu, please come forward. See how I don't do that? Yes. You're the mayor Protem. I want you to read it.
We give to this Mr., and I'm kidding, okay? Okay, represent the Assemblyman of Philip Chen to present this magnificent certificate for your outstanding achievement. So, West Covina, thank you and the state, thank you.
Now is the time for oral communications. Those who would like wish to speak, please fill out a yellow card and present it to our assistant city clerk. You will have five minutes to speak. She will call your name up. As soon as she calls it, please come forward.
Good evening. This evening, I'd like to call forward Florence Villasenor, followed by Colleen Rosati, followed by Bill Elliott.
Thank you. I want to say this is a pleasure. I've never been in front of a city council or in chambers before and it's a neat experience. I'm here to ask a question. I've been in this community for about, I would say, in this area about 20, 25 years. And now I'm experiencing, like many women my age, I'm close to 80. I might find myself homeless and living in a car sometime next year. My rent, I live just down the street, have vintage garden on Bedillo. And we had another pay hike, another race in our rent this month. When I first moved here, it only costs $450 for a senior room. I've been here now 17, 18 years and last month, it cost me $1,050 in some cents to live in that same bedroom. We got another tax, our power and race, and now it's going to be over $1,100. After I pay my rent and I pay my bills and I live on less than $300 a month. Now, I have myself and my main coon cat, she eats more than I do. It's getting hard. Most of the people in my apartment are in the same situation. Our money is running out. We don't know, we cannot get apartments with our budget. little misleading when looking at the bottom line at a glance. An example, if we were to pull out the successor agency funds of 2.3 million, and that, it then changes the bottom line from 70.8 million to 68.5. While the difference isn't large amounts, in retrospect, in my opinion, I think keeping the reports separate would give a clearer view of the overall portfolio for each. My second point is the city's fund under investment portfolio with Chandler Asset Management. These funds have maturity dates and amounts that vary. There are some investments that have already matured since we've opened this portfolio in 2016. I did notice we have quite a few maturing in 2019 from here all the way to December, while others have mature dates as far as 2022. These investments were set up on a tiered format, which is good, in my opinion. It allows us to reinvest to a higher rate or the opportunity to cash it out. Currently, based on balances ending May 31 of 2019, the portfolio has a book value of $21 million with a market value of $20 million point nine. Hypothetically, if we were to liquidate our portfolio with Chandler, based on the market value, we would currently be paid out the $20.9 million as of the 31st of May.
Mr. Rosati, how much longer will this take?
Just about.
That long? 20 seconds?
I doubt it.
Please hurry.
It's up to you whether you want to know the financial stuff.
I do want to hear it. I hope the council's okay with it. Okay, please, I do want to hear this. I just, okay, go.
The difference between the book value and the market value would be about $125,000, meaning cashing these investments in early, hypothetically, if we were to do so, we would not meet our true investment potential, taking a loss. On a side note, these investment accounts, you may remember, were open in the summer of 2016. They had an opening investment balance of 20, oh, I'm sorry, $35 million. So, over the last three years, the city has liquidated about $14 million from this portfolio. I'd like to mention that some of the monies that have been moved from Chandler may possibly be in the LASAP account that has a current balance of $25 million, and I'm currently doing more research to see what makes up that $25 million. Recommendations on retaining our rainy day fund? I'm happy to say that Robin and I are on the same page. That's the finance director. It may be because we're both old-school finance people. We've talked about the Chandler investments that are coming due or maturing. While the city has terminated our reinvestment agreement with Chandler, Robin and I both feel it's important to be proactive with some investment alternatives. So, we are looking into an investment plan that'll be a little to no cost to the city in order to preserve our rainy day account. We both feel that it's critical to the city's financial well-being, and in doing so, we will always keep safety, liquidity, and yield at the forefront of our research. And lastly, this last point has really nothing to do with finance, but it was a concern to myself and my daughter Ashley Rosati, who is referenced in the minutes as Commissioner A. Rosati. These minutes presented tonight go back to October 17, 2018, almost a year ago. I'd like to stress that delay in presenting these minutes isn't necessarily a reflection on those in the HR department now, but maybe from previous staff. Stated in the minutes is her concern as to why the HR Commission were not meeting on a regular basis. She also expressed her concern for the lack of leadership rotation within the Commission on a regular yearly basis. I heard Commissioner Rosati express her concerns many times to past council members who said they were unaware that meetings were not being held. However, I did not see much follow-up with her concerns. I think, given the employee and the staffing situation over the last couple of years, it was important and is important to have HR committee meetings on a regular basis. Unfortunately, that was not happening. They would be scheduled and then counseled by, at that time, the HR Director. The reason I'm bringing this up, I find it interesting that almost a year later, these merits have surfaced. But even more interesting is the importance of leadership in the city's HR department, which I think we've lacked over the years. That was one of the reasons I lobbied during the presentation of the budget for an HR Director, mainly because it's such a vital role and in turning the city and running the city. I know you all realize this as an importance, and you're moving forward to filling that position. These minutes reflect concerns for the welfare of the city and the employees and the things that are being handled in the HR department almost a year ago. I do wonder if these minutes had been presented in a more timely manner, would it have changed how things have turned out? In closing, I'd like to leave you with something that my mom would always tell me. Keep your eye on the donut and not the whole. Elected officials should always keep residents, the city's finances, and its employees at the forefront of any and all decisions they make. The decisions we make, as you know, are critical to the welfare of our city. Thank you.
After next speaker, Bill Elliott, I'd like to call forward Vivian Gomez, followed by Herb Redholtz.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bill Elliott. I'm a longtime West Covina resident, love the city, have a lot of love for this city. There's a lot of people sitting here in the room tonight. One of those people that's not here tonight is Phil Kaufman. I just want to say a couple of words about Phil. You know, he and I didn't see eye to eye on very many things, but we had a rapport with each other. And one time on Facebook, he posted something, and I had to comment, "I can't believe I agree with Phil Kaufman." And he commented, "I can't believe I agree with Bill Elliott." So, I'll miss seeing Phil here, and may he rest in peace. I'm still hoping and holding out for LED stop signs to be taken seriously in the city. LED stop signs are solar-powered, they're really efficient, they're not that much money, they could save lives. We've had so many fatalities since four-way stops in this city in the last few years. You know, and I've said that before, and people go, "Oh, yeah, but you know what?" And then you start giving all kinds of qualifiers, why? That doesn't matter. So, I just hope you guys will consider that in future when it's decision time. Also, the Center Islands in the city on Azusa Avenue, it looks like Tulsa. Dead, dirt, leaves, pine needles. And on the river rock where it leads up to the end of the island, it's all debris and broken taillight pieces, and it looks horrible. This is a corridor into our city. You know, when you go to another city, just let's use Beverly Hills as an example, the Center Islands look like Disneyland. You know, it's attractive. People from out of the state, they go, "Wow, it's nice in California." Really, what they mean is, wow, the Center Islands are really nice. It's kind of the face of the city. I hope that'll be taken more seriously in the future. You know, this is just rumor, and I hesitate to even bring it up, but I just want to address something. You know, I heard that Mr. Carney is a sanctuary city guy. And I know the mayor called him the city manager. I don't know if he's already the permanent city manager or not, but if that's true, that goes against the grain of everything we are in West Covina. West Covina should be moving to make West Covina, West Covina City Council should be moving to make West Covina a rule-of-law city, where we respect the law in this city, and we don't just give certain privileged class passes. Fireworks. You know, I also heard, while the chief was out of town, and we had that, you know, it was like Chinese New Year in West Covina on 4th of July with all the fireworks, where it's illegal to have fireworks. You know, I heard from a pretty good source that the chief of police left instructions that we're going to have zero tolerance. He just came into office, he's just permanently appointed. I understand he had the vacation set up in advance, but I heard he left instructions for there to be no tolerance. And I heard there were 18 warnings given. And doesn't that fall to the ranking officer in the department that is present, Captain 344? We're paying him all this money. You know, if I was, if I had a job and I got left specific instructions by my boss who was leaving town, and he came back and I just kind of went, "Ah, that enforcement." I'd be fired. Most people would fire an employee that had open insubordination. You know, I don't know what it is with the command staff in this department, but they continually disappoint. And I hope the whole sanctuary city thing is worked out, because if that's true, Mr. Carney has no place in West Covina. The homeless problem. You know, we're throwing all this money at the homeless problem. Big tax, Measure H, millions, tens of millions of dollars at our disposal for the homeless problem, but all the government muckety-mucks want to do is create paid positions for themselves to administer all this money. And the truth is, is that we're not being honest about the homeless population, and the homeless population, especially in West Covina, is no different from any other city. There are some people that are on the street because they got to their last paycheck, and the story of this lady breaks my heart. I hope there's some services available to her. I really admire the fact that she is willing to have a job. She has a great voice. She'd be an awesome telephone girl at a plumbing company. If I just have a couple of minutes more, just a few seconds, please. And, but the real problem of the homeless in West Covina is addiction and mental illness. And those people don't respect law. They don't, they think that they have every right to do anything they want to do, and we need to come up with a policy that's going to address those two issues before we're going to start solving the problem. Thank you very much.
Hi, I am Vivian Gomez of West Covina High School, and as well as a member of West Covina Beautiful, a nonprofit organization founded in 1948 that is dedicated, that has many programs that are dedicated to contributing to the beautification of the city that we live, work, and thrive in. I am here today to inform you all of our upcoming Impact Project event, which is on Saturday, July 20, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And this is an invite to everybody. It is a family-friendly event, and to which I encourage you all to attend. We have had many successful impact projects before, to which two specifically, and we had ones which we gathered over 100 volunteers, and we were able to pick up, clean up the parks, and we also beautified a home in here. You can find more information via our Facebook or westcovinabeautiful.org, or I have these newsletters for anyone that would like to collect them. I hope to see you all there, and thank you. Free time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff, and all the folks. Before I comment on Phil, I want to give kudos to our graffiti-removal detail. The other day, Friday afternoon late, I went over and noticed graffiti at Westport and Amar on the traffic control metal box. So, I took a picture of it on our app, and which immediately, with a GPS on your phone, tells them where you're at and where it's at. Took a picture, put a little note, and I got a comment, takes two to three days to take care of it. Great, that's what it says to get back to you. In the morning Saturday, I got up, had an email, "Situation resolved." LED stop signs are solar powered, they're really efficient, they're not that much money, they could save lives. We've had so many fatalities and four-way stops in this city in the last few years. You know, and I've said that before and people go, "Oh, yeah, but you know what?" And then you start giving them all kinds of qualifiers, why? That doesn't matter. So I just hope you guys will consider that in future when it's decision time. Also, the Center Islands in the city on Azusa Avenue, it looks like Tulsa. Dead, dirt, leaves, pine needles. And on the river rock where it leads up to the end of the island, it's all debris and broken taillight pieces, and it looks horrible. This is a corridor into our city. You know, when you go to another city, just let's use Beverly Hills as an example, the Center Islands look like Disneyland. You know, it's attractive. People from out of the state, they go, "Wow, it's nice in California." Really, what they mean is, well, the Center Islands are really nice. It's the kind of the face of the city. I hope that'll be taken more seriously in the future. You know, this is just rumor, and I hesitate to even bring it up, but I just want to address something. You know, I heard that Mr. Carmody is a sanctuary city guy. And I know the mayor called him the city manager. I don't know if he's already the permanent city manager or not, but if that's true, that goes against the grain of everything we are in West Covina. West Covina should be moving to make West Covina, West Covina City Council should be moving to make West Covina a rule of law city, where we respect the law in this city, and we don't just give certain privileged class passes. Fireworks. You know, I also heard while the chief was out of town, and we had that, you know, it was like Chinese New Year in West Covina on 4th of July with all the fireworks, where it's illegal to have fireworks. You know, I heard from a pretty good source that the chief of police left instructions that we're going to have zero tolerance. He just came into office, he's just permanently appointed. I understand he had the vacation set up in advance, but I heard he left instructions for there to be no tolerance. And I heard there were 18 warnings given. And doesn't that fall to the ranking officer in the department that is present, Captain 344? We're paying him all this money. You know, if I was, if I had a job and I got left specific instructions by my boss who was leaving town, and he came back and I just kind of went, "Ah," that enforcement. I'd be fired. Most people would fire an employee that had open insubordination. You know, I don't know what it is with the command staff in this department, but they continually disappoint. And I hope the whole sanctuary city thing is worked out, because if that's true, Mr. Carmody has no place in West Covina. The homeless problem. You know, we're throwing all this money at the homeless problem. Big tax, Measure H, millions, tens of millions of dollars at our disposal for the homeless problem, but all the government muckety-mucks want to do is create paid positions for themselves to administer all this money. And the truth is, is that we're not being honest about the homeless population. And the homeless population, especially in West Covina, is no different than any other city. There are some people that are on the street because they got to their last paycheck. And the story of this lady breaks my heart. I hope there's some services available to her. I really admire the fact that she is willing to have a job. She has a great voice, she'd be an awesome telephone girl at a plumbing company. If I just have a couple of minutes more, just a few seconds, please. And, but the real problem of the homeless in West Covina is addiction and mental illness. And those people don't respect law. They don't, they think that they have every right to do anything they want to do, and we need to come up with a policy that's going to address those two issues before we're going to start solving the problem. Thank you very much.
Hi, I am Vivian Gomez of West Covina High School and as well as a member of West Covina Beautiful, a nonprofit organization founded in 1948 that is dedicated, that has many programs that are dedicated to contributing to the beautification of the city that we live, work, and thrive in. I am here today to inform you all of our upcoming Impact Project event, which is on Saturday, July 20th, from 8:00 AM to noon. And this is an invite to everybody. It is a family-friendly event and to which I encourage you all to attend. We have had many successful impact projects before, to which two specifically, and we had ones which we gathered over 100 volunteers, and we were able to pick up, clean up the parks, and we also beautified a home in here. You can find more information via our Facebook or westcovinabewful.org, or I have these newsletters for anyone that would like to collect them. I hope to see you all there, and thank you. Free time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff, and all the folks. Before I comment on Phil, I want to give kudos to our graffiti removal detail. The other day, Friday afternoon late, I went over and noticed graffiti at Westport and Amar on the traffic control metal box. So I took a picture of it on our app, and which immediately, with a GPS on your phone, tells them where you're at and where it's at. Took a picture, put a little note, and I got a comment, takes two to three days to take care of it. Great, that's what it says to get back to you. In the morning Saturday, I got up, had an email, "Situation resolved." So I went over there and, by golly, it was gone. It's pretty quick. And Sunday, there's another little box next to it that controls the traffic light when somebody pulls up, you know, it kind of triggers it, and that was covered with the same graffiti message. So here I go again, take a picture of it, send it in. Monday, I get an email, "Situation resolved." Went over there, by golly, gone again. So hats off, kudos, thank you, thumbs up, Mayor Pro Tem, to our graffiti abatement staff that's now done in-house. And, you know, I'm telling you, that's pretty darn good. I'm impressed, and, you know, we want to keep our city looking good and clean, and that's what they're doing. Appreciate that. So let me just say a couple of words about my friend, Phil Kaufman, who died apparently two weeks ago tonight. You know, I sat in that front row next to him for many years at these meetings, and it's sad. It's going to be different. You know, we sat there and we listened to the meeting, and we would occasionally glance at our phones and, you know, see what's happening with the Dodgers. He wouldn't be happy tonight. Kenley Jansen blew a save in the bottom of the ninth. But, you know, the world lost a good man, and the city lost a loyal servant. You know, this is a guy who served dedicated, dedicating, is that a word? With dedication to the city of West Covina. When Mr. Toma was defeated last year, he was, you know, upset because, you know, he was going to lose his position, and, you know, some things were arranged, and the mayor put him on community services, and he was, you know, a happy guy because he got to serve. Because, you know, he'd go to all the events. You know, I try to get to a lot of them, but sometimes I can't, but, you know, I'd see him, the pictures would end up on Facebook, and there he was, so I knew he was there. So it's like losing a family member. He was a good man, and he's going to be missed, and really impossible to replace a guy like that. So I just want to wish him to rest in peace, and we'll miss him in these chambers, and the city will miss his service to the city. And then he's lost a customer also, over there in Baldwin Park. So thank you very much, and again, kudos to the graffiti people.
We have no more speaker cards?
Thank you. We shall move on now. Next is our consent calendar, and from what I understand, there won't be...
I don't need to remove it, but can we make a note to correct the spelling of Councilmember Castellano's name on the July 2nd City Council regular meetings?
Oh, very nice. Maybe they spelled it the way I pronounce it. Yes, will you please make that note, make that correction, please?
Correction will be made.
Okay, with that, maybe we have, since known that the council member wants to pull all the items, maybe we have a motion to accept the consent calendar as read? Have a second?
Call second.
We have a motion and second, we have roll call, please?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, pass it 5-0. That's in the consent calendar. Number 12, item number 12, a consideration of delegation, a voting delegate for the League of California Cities 2000 Annual Conference. It's one of our council members. Where's the going, or?
I'm going, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to nominate Mr. Mayor to represent the West Covina City to be a delegate for the voting thing. And if not, then I would be the alternate.
Okay, I'll second that motion. I'd love to be able to do it. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second, we have a roll call, please. If there's no other comments?
No, I'm perfectly okay with that. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, pass it 5-0. Next, we have item number 13, discussion regarding short-term rentals in West Covina. Mayor Pro Tem wanted to speak on this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, okay, the agenda a little bit misleading, okay? And I think last time when we talked about this, we talked about the penalty, we talked about potential prosecution for people illegally, okay, ran out, okay? We already approved 5-0, basically, West Covina never allowed Airbnb or short-term, okay, leasing, okay? So they created some kind of nuisance for the neighborhood and safety for our residents. So recently, a month ago, we have somebody, okay, fatality, the gun shooting for illegal party in the Airbnb. So the, what I, okay, one, mother may I see, the city to look into it, okay, well, our attorney to see what we can do to stop this kind of illegal, okay, action, so we can kind of stop this kind of... Some people buying the property in West Covina, and they do not live over there, they lease out, okay, and they don't keep their property nice. So what we can do, okay, and they make money, and the city have suffered, we have to send out a lot of resources to stop this crime and this nuisance, and to stop maybe the breaking the peace of our residents. So maybe you can, okay, see, attorney, see what we can do. Do we have a test? My point is, the city have any kind of test, okay, to fine, to do any legal action to against, okay, the investor buying the property in West Covina do not keep the property nice or safe for us?
Mayor and Council, we have a report prepared on this topic tonight. Director Anderson is going to just kind of review where we are, talk about current tools, and also about some other things that we might want to turn our attention towards. So I'm going to ask Jeff to give a brief report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go quickly, since I think Mayor Pro Tem Wu covered most of it. Short-term rentals, we have existing code regulations, and we talked about this on January 16th, 2018, the existing standards that we have in the code, and it was asked by, to bring it back on June 4th this year. Short-term rentals include a variety of things, including vacation rentals, hosted home sharing, and unhosted home sharing. I won't go through what those are, but there's a distinction between those things. And there's a variety of companies that provide short-term rentals, including, the one that everybody talks about is Airbnb, but there's, I think, if I count one of our former staff members, there's at least 15 companies that do this time of work, and people just post things on the internet as well by themselves. So there is a definition for hotel in the code. I'm not going to go through this because it sounds like, unless there's questions, and these type of uses fit under the definition of hotel. To read down there, tourist home or house, motel studio, hotel bachelor hotel, lodging house, rooming house, all those things are part of a hotel. Generally, if you're staying somewhere less than 30 days, that fits under the definition of a hotel. We do not specifically use the term short-term rental. That's kind of something that probably, that term wasn't probably well-known more than 10 years ago. The municipal code does have a list, those other uses that I just talked about, and it classifies them as a hotel. I provided that definition location in the code, it's in the code under taxation in the municipal code. The zoning section of the municipal does not allow hotels in residential areas, so that's not a listed use for residential zones. Houses and some other uses like churches, religious facilities, and daycare centers are generally allowed in residential uses, in residential areas, but hotels or motels, transient types uses like that of where stays of less than 30 days are proposed, those aren't allowed in residential zoned areas. So short-term rentals can have significant impacts on residential neighborhoods. I've listed three of them. Nuisance activities such as noise, parties, and trash. Second negative impact on housing inventory because it reduces the number of housing units that people can rent or purchase, and the loss of stable residential character because now people don't know their neighbors, and there's different people moving through the neighborhood at different times. They, when, if you live in a homeowners association or apartment complex, there's usually rules against doing this type of thing in the CCNRs or in the rules that you, leases that you So there are multiple short-term rental websites and mobile apps identifying properties that are in violation can be very difficult. Often, the websites do not list addresses or any identifying pictures to confirm the address of a specific property. So at first glance, it might think, well, yeah, just look up the ones that are listed on Airbnb. So kind of played some games with Airbnb over the past few days. If you look up Airbnb, it'll show a map, and it'll show where things are located. You can hit on that, and it'll show you generally a picture of a room, not a house, but a room, and it will not tell you an address. I've been told that you can only get an address if you purchase something. So if you pay the cost to rent it, then you'll get an address. So as you can see, enforcement is, code enforcement can be a difficult process when it's sort of hidden behind those, in a website. Additionally, having code enforcement staff research listings on short-term residential websites has not proven to be very effective because of the reasons that I just said. There are third-party service providers that can have a more effective approach. You hire them, and they will work through the internet to try to find the people that are not following the rules. We could issue a RFP and try to see if we could hire someone. Don't know what the cost or something like that would be. In my quick review of only Airbnb, again, I didn't try to look at VRBO or some of the other ones that were listed there, I would have detected maybe 10 that were advertised in West Covina on the dates that I chose. Also, keep in mind, you don't just, when you do that, you don't just ask what's available, you ask what's available for a date and a certain number of people. So, you know, it's a long-term process. It's not easy to find out who's doing this, and even if you catch someone and tell them not to do it and get through a code enforcement process, I'm not sure there's much to stop them from starting the next day, doing it again. So it's a long-term, ongoing issue that is a difficult thing. Cities have wrestled with it. I think what we've found so far in our research is that maybe the most effective way is to hire a company to monitor it on a daily basis. So currently, code enforcement addresses, as they do everything because of the number of employees we have there, they address things on complaint basis. And I talked to the code enforcement officer today, and they said they probably had about three complaints over the past six months to a year, and tried to address all of those. So that's the, that's my presentation on the code standards and where enforcement efforts are at.
Have you reached out directly to the rental websites and specifically state, city of West Covina is not, does not allow it? So if anything does occur, if anybody submits for, and you see city of West Covina to not even list it?
Well, yeah, I'll have Scott answer that. The city attorney, just to be clear, I'm not over code enforcement right now, I've not worked with code enforcement, I just have had communication, but I think code enforcement has been working with Scott on some of those issues.
So earlier in June, we did send a letter to Airbnb informing them of the requirements of the municipal code, specifically saying that it is prohibited. We have yet to receive a response, so we don't, we can certainly talk about enforcement actions if we want to ratchet that up. That's, those are certainly options to consider, and we can talk about that in closed session if you want to discuss that in closed session, those are options. Short of litigation, we could certainly send letters to each of them informing them of the legal requirements, and then we could see how that proceeds. There has recently been a court case which did uphold the ability of cities to enforce existing requirements along these lines, so that is helpful case authority for us, should that be an avenue that we wish to proceed down.
So currently, our city basically campaign, okay, a basis. It's not by code enforcement, they find this problem, then we can right away find them, okay, or we, so what you say is, somebody complained, complained, and then?
Correct. So the way that the city, due to the lack of code enforcement officers, there's, you know, only a certain number of code enforcement officers, and so the city has made the determination that the way that it handles code enforcement is on a complaint basis. So rather than proactively solving problems, it's rather reactive and handle the ones that come in.
So that's what the problem currently we have, the situation that a lot of people using it, since nobody complained, or nobody kind of was, they don't want to snitch out the neighbor, or they worry about, just want to live their own life. So my point is, okay, and since we are going to change to, we are going to approve a budget, okay, for our next year, okay, this year to the 2020, for the three, okay, part-time, and they driving all the time, plus the one full-time, so meaning we have a full person, okay, to do the code enforcement. So in that way, that we're including this, okay, so-called short-term rental and plus so kind of so-called code violation, that we can right away proactive, rather than waiting for somebody, because if you drive around, you can see the problem we have, and plus, so many people complaining about, so they don't, they really worry about the car parking, and they have no idea their neighbor this or that. So this issue should be addressed, okay, and really look into it, how can we clean up the city for all those people buying the property, or the investment in our city, and they don't well cap, okay, and create a problem for us? So especially, and if they do short-term, okay, and do this daily basis, or so-called illegal party, and they do the problem last time, they're doing drugs, and they even create homicide. So this is a major issue we need to really address to make sure, okay, that this thing won't happen again.
I disagree with Mayor Pro Tem Wu slightly, in that I've generally found that Airbnb rentals and Verbo rentals and HomeAway are kept well because you want good reviews. So I don't think that's the issue. I don't think driving around is going to find them. I'm concerned when I hear, tried to enforce, you got complaints, and you tried to do something, what stopped you? And the underlying question of what are our teeth when we find this violation? So somebody complains, the city staff actually does something about it, what happens to those people? I think that's what Mayor Pro Tem Wu is looking for, is, you know, if you're going to get a letter from the city, you stop for a day and start again tomorrow, and there's no action, what is to stop you?
So the municipal code already prohibits this type of use in, for example, the R1 zone. So the question is, how does that, how does code enforcement act? So I'm not your code enforcement officer, so I can't give you excruciating detail, but the short version is essentially they give a ticket. And it's, so the first violation is typically, I believe they do a warning first, it's a warning, and then cities have the authority to fine an increasing amount. So if they come back and a second time, then they say, "Oh, well, you haven't fixed the problems," then you issue a ticket for $100. Well, and then they come back another time, and it's 200, up to $500. So if you have multiple repeat visits, you can continue to issue citations, and potentially, it can ratchet up to the level of bringing in the city attorney and citing them for violations of the municipal code.
When the report comes back, can we get the levels and what we can do to make the levels higher, if at all, in terms of the violations?
We can certainly look into options as far as enforcement.
And maybe even getting rid of the warning if we can.
No, I, my comment on this is that it's illegal in the city of West Covina. What I am getting frustrated with, if we're making something illegal in the city, and then we're giving them warnings, this is on every, this is on everything. I would, myself, as a council member setting up as a mayor, I would like to see the warning. If they know it's there, the first fine should not be $100. I don't care if the first fine's $1,000. If we figure out a change in the municipal code to make it work, if we don't put teeth into it, they're going to say, you know, "A hundred bucks, I'm making more off of that one, I rented out." I don't care if I pay 100, if I don't care if I pay $500. I'm making more of that offer, and I rented it off for a day, or whatever they do for. If we can't change our municipal code to let these renters know, the people that own the property, that what they're doing is illegal, no warning the first time. If you want to give them a small fine the first time, fine, let it be known, the first time's a fine. The second time is the limit. You know, if they want to fight it and go to court, that's up to them. They don't have to get their own attorneys, it's going to cost them more. If we don't put teeth into it, we're just blowing smoke, just like everything else we're doing. If we're putting warnings out there, no one's paying attention to the warnings. So we have to make it worth the while for the city. If we're going to have a code enforcement, or someone go out there and have to time, let's show them, hey, we're not kidding as a city. You obey by the law that we, the municipal code calls for, or this is a penalty. To me, that's what I'd like to see, look.
So to be clear, I do not know how this particular code enforcement, whether they're issuing a warning or going straight to tickets, but I've certainly heard the direction that we don't wish to issue warnings, rather go straight to the fine.
Well, and that's what we want to see. We want to see what the policy is, recommendations on how we can change it, how many warnings do you have to get before it reaches city attorney level, and then you're able to take them to court for violation of the codes? But just the process, how we can strengthen it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll echo my fellow council members' sentiments. I'd like to eliminate warnings, maximize penalties to the property owners and also ratchet up the pressure on Airbnb. I'm glad to hear you sent them a letter last month. I also reached out to them June 5th and followed up July 14th. They were very apologetic by phone and said I would be hearing back. Still nothing. So I think with that court case you mentioned, we should apply full pressure there as well. Thank you.
Just hypothetically regarding what we just happened, okay, what we can do for Sunset Avenue that happened, okay, they ran it out for high school kids underage, okay? And now they party over there and their DJ got killed, okay? And they're doing drug, okay? And they create a major issue for the resident and neighborhood. What the city can do and what our city attorney can put the teeth to this homeowner, okay? You ran it out for underage kid to do party, do drug, what is the consequence?
Not to interrupt, but I think that one may be better, closed session, anticipate a litigation, something like that than out here.
But I'm just, for example, what maybe the city can do?
Well, certainly I don't want to, I echo your concerns. I don't want to get into too much depth, but certainly to the extent that residents in the community are aware of ongoing illegal activity, step number one, if they inform the city, then the city can respond. We have, that's the city's standard practice. And that's true of police, fire, you name it, that's certainly step number one. But we can certainly return to other actions relating to enforcement of the existing laws.
Okay. Thank you. That it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's in that. Do we have a motion? Do you have a more comment on it, on item number 13?
This is receive and file.
Does we receive file? I do a poll. Is this receiving file? Okay. Direction on it? Okay? Are we set? Okay. Now we shall move on to the mayor councils. Is there any AB 1234s? Seeing now, before I move, I know we have, I, Mother May, I do like to have, I want to do adjournment first, then we do Mother May before we go. Thank you. Okay, I do have adjournment tonight I would like to do. I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Phil Kaufman. Phil was a very dedicated husband and father. He has left behind his daughter, Robin, and her husband, Gail. Phil was married for over 40 years. She was loving wife who passed away a couple of years ago. You could tell how much Phil really loved his wife. To this day, before he passed away, he still misses her just by talking about her. So we knew exactly how he's felt about her. See, I know personally that he never got over. Him and I would have talks once in a while and he'd bring it up and he'd tell me, you know, I'd have been married 43 years this year if she wouldn't have passed away. And I understand that because myself, I've been married 46 years already and I would know how I would have felt if my wife passed away. So it's, you know, Phil, he lived in West Covina for over 40 years, many, many years. He was involved with the city politics for many years as a community and senior service commissioner. And like, her retails said, you know, when the council changed, Phil was out of community service, you know? And I could tell just by talking to him how devastated he was. Phil loved politics. He said, him and I disagreed on a lot of things. I mean, I mean a lot of things. But you know what? I respected everything he said because that was his conviction. He, he believed it. Phil would never say something just to be saying it. Phil believed everything he said and I respected him 100% for that. I know he will be missed by a lot of us. And I also, after every Tuesday night, we went out over to Denny's and we'd have breakfast together. So we spent a lot of time together. He was at a lot of our community events. He was at concerts in the parks. So I'm saying, he will be missed. I know he'll be missed by a lot of people and a lot of residents because he was very involved with a lot of things. Historical society was involved with everything. So I just want to say we will miss you, Phil. God bless you. And Assistant City Clerk, will you please make a note of this and send the proper condolences to the family force?
I will, sir.
Yes.
Before you finish with that part?
I'm done.
I just wanted to make a couple of requests.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a council member's request. I'd like to get an update on what we can do as a city and also involving the county and the Department of Agriculture, an update on what's going on with the coyotes. The pictures online are, you know, like more and more postings, not only in our city but surrounding cities as well. So I'd like to see what, if we could turn up some pressure on the coyotes. And also, I'd like to see a report on what Mr. Bill Elliott said about the LED stop signs to see the feasibility and also especially if they're solar powered. Maybe that's a good option to look at. Thank you.
Mayor?
I just wanted to add on for, in response to your coyote, if we can, if the city can share the coyote management plan to the residents, to us and the residents. And I know, I believe if there's, I don't know how outdated it is, but if we can update that and get all the reports that was done previously regarding trapping and so forth. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I want to follow through because, okay, I think two, three years ago, we have a coyote, okay, which county come over here, give us some of the thing. But after these two, three years, I think our coyote, okay, right now it's like the population go out like crazy, okay? Let's like all the places, including my street on Cotez, they're coming home and I see coyote. We're not one, we're talking about packs, three or four, okay, roaming on the street and jumping on the fence. So this is not only in one street or this, I think the entire city infestation regarding coyote. So we have to see what kind of, like, okay, Councilman Castellano to say what kind of county agriculture or the state and plus the city, what we can do. Do we, people asking about trapping, this and that, what we can do to really reduce this population, okay? And more importantly is try to, what kind of solution what city can do? Thank you.
And myself, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll go last.
I think it would be helpful to maybe put on the website, if we can, a summary of the report on the coyotes that we got in our weekly update about trapping that they are doing. I grew up with coyote packs walking down my hill, but I live next to the Wilderness Park. It's unusual to see them over by Edgewood and in the middle of the city and everything else. So I do think it's important, one, that the city knows that the Department of Agriculture has been here and have identified, I believe it was three areas that they're going to set traps in and see what we can do to expand it. I also have another request. We have a lobbyist that the city employs and I asked for a copy of any reports that he has done and what the person's been working on. And basically, there's only been one report that is a summary of bills that you can get off the League of California Cities website. And I know that they work on other individual things for us. I would like to see the city take a more proactive approach rather than them saying, you know, we're watching 500 of the 2,500 bills on behalf of the city. I would like to pin down what really affects our city and what the priorities of the council are so we can take a more active role in lobbying, advocating for things that are important to our community. We're unusual for a city our size that we have two assembly people and two senators. It's worth remembering that and taking advantage of that. And so if we could get that back, I'd appreciate it.
I would also like to take, keep looking at, I know I brought it up a couple of meetings ago, about what we can do along with the other cities around us, Covina, Baldwin Park, Walnut, you know, to get together with them and find out as a, an area, not just of West Covina, because coyotes travel up there, they go from Walnut, they go over here, they go from Baldwin Park. If we can work together and find out as a, we can put a little bit more pressure on Sacramento and those if we work as a unit instead of one at a time. I'd like to see us move forward on that. Okay, following that, I'll need to make an announcement before we adjourn. It's just a reminder that the next regular scheduled city council meeting, now it's scheduled for the 6th of August, will be canceled. So the next regular meeting will be held on the 20th of August at 7:00 PM. Yes, go right ahead. Yes, if you, you want to make a comment? Please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I think I request the city manager regarding, okay, LZ investment regarding requests, okay, two weeks ago, okay? And regarding each district, they have a park, okay? It's let the maintenance fee that, okay, we pull, that's paid by the, okay, the district or they're paid by the park fee. So we don't want to mingle in if this is not, okay, including into the, their district, the money should we, we fund it to the district trust account. So we don't mingle in about the, okay, we need to define who paid for what, if this is park money, okay, the park fees or those, they should use the budget over there, what they're using the district and money. So maybe you can answer, I think she's still waiting for the report for the front city. Okay, thank you.
And I need to jump on that one because it's actually been a few months since I requested that we get a copy of the documents that set up those maintenance districts and what they cover and everything else. And so if I could at some point actually get what I requested, I'd appreciate it.
Last Mother May I. I wanted to have the city look into the fireworks, the enforcement. I know there's a lot of cities out there that have zero tolerance and yet it still continues. So I want the, I want our city to see what real solutions or alternatives and what we can do to better enforce the fireworks situation. Thank you.
Okay, now seeing any more, I'm not adjourning the city council meeting because we have to go back up to closed session. And if you like, you can hang around and if you want to hear what we have to say out of there, you're more than welcome. We're not, we won't be coming back down here. If you want to hear what we have to say, you're more than welcome to wait up there for us. If not, we're done for this evening.